Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. This is March eighth, twenty twenty-three. First thing on our agenda tonight is to have a roll call. So. You're online?
Here.
David Fedders?
I am present.
Steven Hardy?
Present.
Chris Fritz?
Here.
And I should probably call. I said I would. Levi. I would call Levi before I turned my phone off. He's quite a home sick and he didn't want to infect us. So let me get him online here. Levi Shank? Are you ready to be at the meeting?
I am.
You are now in attendance.
I'm ready. I'm gonna mute myself for the moment.
Thank you. I will leave my phone here. Hopefully, can you hear pretty well at the moment?
Aye. I can hear just fine.
Thanks, Levi.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody's present. At this moment, we'd like to... Advise anybody in the audience who would like to be on record to state your name.
Stan Roth.
Denise Alon.
Would you like to be on record as being here? In attendance?
No, that's fine.
No? Okay. Next, I will ask for any additions or any additions to the agenda.
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I just, I'll have a few tech updates. A report, if you will.
Okay. I'm going to add one, too, about Willis Street between Fourth and Fifth. Did you say you've had one, David?
No, I do not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, next on our agenda is to approve the, to approve the minutes from February ten, twenty-second. If somebody would like to make a motion to that effect? Yes.
Uh, maybe I have an outdated copy, but Mike and Laura Hayes?
Mike and Laura Hayes, yes.
I think that's listed on the agenda.
Yes, it is. And he's not here at the moment, so...
Sorry, I didn't know.
That's the only reason I went past him.
Never mind me. I'm wrong. Go for it.
So, does everybody have a copy of the minutes? From February twenty-second?
I will move to approve as written.
Second. Joe.
So we have a motion to approve and a second from Stephen. Further discussion?
Actually, I guess one thing, and I, this is an honest question. I'm not, I don't know what the correct formatting of this is. But when we have the motion to accept, which, thank you for the underline, because that was so confusing, the way that happened. But motion to accept the MKB contract for one year failed by verbal assent five oh. I think actually that should say fi- failed oh five.
Oh five, exactly.
Yeah, I think.
Zero, five, zero.
Yeah. I get, I get what you're saying. It's like it failed with everyone.
With a full vote.
But the failures, I think, are always on the right side of the equation, so. Um, sorry. Little technicality there, but...
That's okay.
Other than that, I think...
It does say failed, does it not?
It does. It does.
Okay. That was the part that I know caught my eye.
Mm-hmm. No, and that's a really good underline, too.
What he's stating is, what you're seeing there, it's contradictory to itself.
Sure.
If somebody is...
Yeah.
Maybe I'll put a question mark there.
Any further discussion? So we'll go back to Joe then. Joe, would you like to restate your motion to accept it with the changes as... As mentioned?
Yes, I would. I will modify my motion to accept it with the... Modification, clarification. As stated by Councilman Hardy.
I second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes from February twenty-second with the changes that have been stated. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, say the same? That carries five zero. Thank you, council. Let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is to approve the claims.
Move to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Stephen. Is there a second?
Second.
So we've got a motion and a sec- and a second to approve our claims. Further discussion?
I would just like to call out, uh... Donna's efforts, and I don't know if, Joe, your work with the SAM account falls into this as well, but we see on here Department of Retirement Services. And I've heard from many people associated with the city that this has been quite the effort to get ourselves back on top of this. And so I just wanted to say a thank you that, uh... Okay, I didn't know if the SAM account played into it. I know it was mostly Donna's been the one, you know, that has been the judge down, but...
That was just another of my thunders for later on in the meeting.
Okay.
We've got two of them covered right now. I'll cover them again, but thank you for...
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Did we, we didn't previously, um... Touch on, uh, left hold of some more with, we didn't approve, I mean, that one. They didn't come out prior?
That is, that is right now, the check has been made, waiting to be signed.
Okay. We just talked about it at a prior meeting.
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the claims as written? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, the same? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, council.
Sorry for the bad form on this, Mayor. It doesn't change my vote, but the more I'm looking at it, the more I'm curious. Why do we do a coliform bacteria test in Memorial Hall?
Well... And where are you seeing that?
Uh, we can't have that. And I'm not, I'm not saying it wasn't necessary. I'm, actually, I'm just wanting to learn because I thought all of our testing came from the wellheads.
No, they don't actually come at the wellhead. I think they come from specified positions in town, and that's probably...
That's one of them.
That's one of them.
Oh, okay.
They're taken at different areas. One's taken by the school. They're taken in different sections of town, so we've covered all of the piping systems.
Okay.
The one with the school gets the part where it's gotten by our new pipe system.
Right.
And that one's taken down here, and there's one from over here, too.
Okay. I guess I just didn't see that.
I'm not sure why that's broke out as separate. I think that's just the one that it came, that was written in for the man, Levi Shank.
Yeah. Oh, that's fine. I, I just don't think I had seen it called out before, which is nice to know, so. All good.
Okay. We'll keep on moving down the list here. So the next thing we'd like to talk about is approving our payroll.
Move to the...
Second.
Hey, we've got a motion on the floor. And a second. To approve the payroll. Further discussion?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all in favor of voting for the motion that's re-signed by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, council. Uh, we're going to move backwards here a little bit. For a moment, we're going to go back to Mike Hayes. Mike Hayes is interested in starting a new business, a distillery, in the city of Harrington. But he had several questions for the council before he started investing money with, uh, and make sure that there was no, uh... Items that might be of concern to the council. So, Mike, I'll give you the floor for a couple of minutes here if you wanna explain.
Sure. Sorry, I'm a little late. I, uh, actually, it written down as eight o'clock for some reason. Luckily, I have a mother-in-law in town who said, "No, I have to get to something." So, um, my wife and I have been looking at this distillery business for quite a few years. Currently, I work for Boeing, um, getting ready to retire from them at some point in the next year or so. And so we've actually started moving forward to figure out where to put a distillery. So a small craft distillery, uh, maybe some sheets so you guys can look at what we're doing. Nothing big right now. We're planning to grow over time, slowly. Start up slow, learn from there. And I just wanted to, you know... Get a feeling of where Harrington might be for that kind of business. It's a, most of the products will be made out of wheat or locally grown grains. The only one that's gonna be not really local will be corn. So, uh, we can call it grounded glass production system. So everything, we're farming it all the way out to put it on the table, so. But before we invest the money in a building, we own a few in town, the family does, but none of them are suitable, so we're gonna have to do something else. Distilleries can't be in a building that's adjacent to another building or has dual use, and I wouldn't put it too close to a residence if I could help it. So, you know, those are, those are the things that I worry about. So none of the buildings are suitable, so we're gonna have to figure something out. And I have a couple ideas, but before we did that, I wanted to check in with the city council, see if there's any questions, objections, concerns with making alcohol in the town of Harrington.
Has that, um, been run by the Washington Control, the Liquor Board?
Um, yeah, but I don't think they call themselves that anymore. I'd have to look it up to get the right, but mainly, the alcohol production is the T P B, which used to be the ATF. So, uh, it's a federal license. You must have a federal license to do it. Before you get the license, you have to put all the equipment in, so you have to front all the money. And then they come in and inspect, give you a license. Generally, the big issues are fire, storage, locations, and federal license. It's the busy one, alcoholic beverage, you can't produce at home. You must have a federal license.
Are you thinking just production of, or are you thinking like a tasting room kind of?
At some point, maybe a tasting room, but the, the one downside to Harrington is it is not really a destination spot. Maybe that happens over time, but, you know. It's, it's a good spot for us.
My only comment would be looking at our historic ordinances and making sure there's not something lurking in there that would be... Had not been repealed or...
That could be.
I brought across a couple from pre-prohibition.
Yeah.
I mean, there was ordinances pre-prohibition that were passed. Were they ever taken off, back off the books? I don't know. I'm assuming they were, but that's a bad thing to do around here.
Which is part of asking the question, right? Just to find out, you know, if there's anything lurking, any questions, any issues. Uh, 'cause frankly, there's no point in pushing it on a town if they don't want it. You never know.
I personally don't have an issue. I mean, a clean run, more revenue in town is, is just beneficial for everybody, so.
So when you mention fire, Mike? Would this be a fully sprinkler building with its own fire suppression?
It will have to have some form of fire suppression. That'll be either the county or the local fire marshal, whoever that is. And then depends on where the property is, right?
A positive system, so it would run off positive water pressure?
Yep.
Not require a pump truck to hook up and...
Nope. It has to, it has to be there.
Be a live system, so if it were live, it'd be taken care of.
And the electrical incinerators has to be explosion proof.
Okay, alright.
It's like a grain elevator, right? Because one, you're gonna actually be making flour. That's the first step in the process.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to have those things, and then it's alcohol. You know, if, if that boiler gets too hot, if a fire catches right near it and it can't control itself, there's potential for, for boiler explosion, so you don't wanna take chances. So those things are all right there up front.
Part of the structure.
Okay.
Is there, is there, is there codes that require or required for distillers by the state?
No, probably not. Not for distilleries, but there are probably codes that each individual fire marshal will choose to, to enforce.
Okay.
There's one that's black and white that, too.
Okay. Uh, so I checked the ordinances from the founding of Harrington to twenty-twenty. Odd date range, but that's another subject. And, uh, there is no mention of the word alcohol or spirits in there, so. Uh, what kind of indications, sorry, were, were you looking for any specific indications from the council about anything?
What I'm hearing sounds like there's no objections. That's, that's a good start. Uh, there's gonna be questions later probably as we start putting things together and bring in equipment and start working with fire marshal and... That all has to, first you have to get started, then you gotta find the place. Once you have that location, then you can figure out who the fire marshal is, what rules apply. Uh, I expect at this point, you know, I'm looking inside the city limits, so.
Residential versus commercial?
Yeah, definitely commercial.
The business strip here are residential.
Do you believe on the business strip here that might work because they are independent, but they're also kind of close to houses, so I don't, I don't know how comfortable I'll feel with that. Short term, probably okay, because we're talking, you can see here, um, probably, I said small stills here, the, the first still is probably about two gallons. The second still is twenty-six gallons, the third still is fifty-three gallons, unless I move it up to a fifty-five gallon. Depends on pricing at the time we purchase.
Do you know if the, the feds have any stipulations, regulations regarding where this structure can go up or business?
That's where some of the, you can't have dual use, you can't have other locations that are...
Like next to a school?
Yeah, you can't, there's, there's a few of them, and none of them really affect down here. It's just...
Right. If you wanna get me your email later on, I, uh, the map's over there, but I've got a scan of it. I can send you that shows the, the...
I have that map on my door.
Okay, okay. It shows the commercial.
In case you guys don't know it, my father-in-law was Paul Gilliland.
Okay.
So I, I'm familiar.
Thank you.
That, that, so, sorry. I just, I don't normally tell people anymore.
I don't, I was going to bring it up, but I wasn't sure if everybody's here, who you are not.
Probably not. I'm not, I'm in and out of town. We live here. We've been here for a couple of years now, my wife and kid and I, but I'm out of town all the time with the Boeing company, so.
I guess the last question I would have with is, so were you looking more for the indications of the government of Harrington towards you or the public towards that?
Or just how the city council felt about this type of business? But like I said, alcohol businesses are strange. People can be very one-sided or the other on them. We had prohibition for a reason. But now it seems that we're coming back the other side. We've got some really good businesses in the state of Washington. Small craft distilleries in Dry Fly in Spokane. I, I, I don't use their name here, but I actually talk about them here. The guys that did that, they're the ones that set the state law, and it's more of an agricultural product than it is, uh, alcohol product, the way it's designed for craft distilleries, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the council? Alright, Doc.
I just had a statement, I was going to say, I'm not much of a drinker, but I have no opposition to it.
That's fine. You know, when I started to look at this, I had to call my brother because he's recovering alcohol.
Oh.
And, and ask him if he was okay with it. And he was fine with it, so that's one of those things I felt like, you know, you have, kind of have to do that with family, make sure they're okay with certain things you do. And I, I think that's.
It was a, it was a nice thing for you to do.
Yeah. But, you know, I don't think it's about drinking, I think it's about interacting with people. And drinking just kind of happens at the same, that's the way I see it, so.
I haven't read every word in here, but Mike, is it, your intention is that it's going to be an onsite consumption or just a man?
Right now, just manufacturing. Later on, if we can see that there's a market for that, then yeah, we would probably want to do that. But I can't imagine it'll ever be that big. There are already places in town that I could sell bottles to anyway, so I'd rather do that than start up another competing business. And I honestly don't see the foot traffic.
Right.
Here in town. Does that change it?
You remember the saying, you build it, they'll come.
That's true. I don't want, that's why I don't want to take note of that.
Right.
It's not, it's not in the plan today. It's, it's an opportunity that could exist.
Well, that's, I believe that's from the, whatever they go, whatever handle they go by now, the Washington, our former Washington State Liquor Control Board.
Marijuana and Alcohol Control Board.
Yeah. Thank you, Washington.
Yeah.
But whatever, that agency in the past is regulated next to each other, who can, who can't, you know, and all that, so that's why I kind of asked.
Yeah. There is a license to the state of Washington, but it's not the license you have to have. It's just, it's a way for them to get tax revenue and to know whose distillery. And make sure they know where to come look if they want to do an inspection.
Right. Okay, well, thank you.
Are you familiar with the one in Woodinville, Washington? Next to, next to Marymore Park? And they make whiskey, I believe, and they have tasting rooms and they sell pancake syrup.
Yeah, they, they have a beautiful facility.
Yeah. So that's some way you're going to produce a product, but you're not planning on having a tasting room or a.
No.
Sales room to sell.
Nope.
Keychains or anything else at the present moment.
Nope, if we do that, it'll be online. I think there are currently 26 gates that you can sell direct to the customer, you know, posted services. So there are opportunities there that feed more traffic.
Very good. Thank you for coming down.
Sure.
Levi, you have anything?
Levi, are you still there or did you totally?
I had to, I had to fish my phone out. Uh, not right now, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mike, did you get the information you wish?
I did. That's, that's good. I mean, move forward and keep going slowly down the road.
Okay, neighbor.
Thank you for looking, bringing business to Harrington.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You're here.
If you can make gasoline.
David's looking for ethanol product for some of his engines.
He might be pretty good.
You can do that at home. That's actually the only thing I could do at home. I want consumption of ethanol.
Yeah, he's far enough away from me, I guess I wouldn't worry about it.
If you want more information.
I think I'm not far enough from you that I don't even have to worry about an explosion. I hope.
Just see David flying by.
Yeah.
There he goes.
The more you know.
Oh. Okay. If there's nothing more on that, we're going to move to the next subject here, which is to discuss resolution 234-2022. And I've talked to only one of the council people about that. And it was brought to me by the library board, reason being is they felt they were unable to ascertain from this document how they were supposed to go about picking an individual to replace a person who retired. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the council, and I don't know if, are you here to speak about that?
Where's the can?
Pardon me?
Where's the can?
I kicked it.
So my feeling about it, my proposal to the council, our document just refers to the R C W. The R C W says that the person will be appointed with the, by the mayor with the approval of the council, so it does not really specify a methodology so much as it specifies who must sign off on the person. Does not really specify where the person comes from or how. In seeing this, that probably was a bit of an oversight in how we craft the document that we didn't, and I say that to myself as being one of the people that worked on that, that we didn't get more specific with it. But the good news is that at least from my perspective, there are no restrictions in terms of we, how we go about this either. So I would propose that we would extend to the library board the same courtesy afforded to the city council, that when there isn't vacancy on the city councils, we just saw with Peter and Chris, is that the remaining council members have the ability to select. So what I would say is we can invite the library board to select a name by their own means, and we as the council and the mayor could assumably agree to abide by their requested name. I'd like to add to that, Councilman Hardy, that going off of the old resolution, 96-94, the one that, I believe, 224 replaced. Replaced, yes. I think it is possibly an oversight that occurred, but here under the section two, it, it, the language in our new resolution, if I said our, I apologize, resolution, our new resolution is only half of what was in the old one. And the old one was very clear, after they determined the order 12345, the selection of the board members, it says, "The library board shall forward to the city council a list of recommendations to fill any vacancy occurring by reason of resignation, retirement, or death. Members shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council after consideration of the recommendations of the library board." I propose to add that paragraph into, amend 2234 with that paragraph. I don't think we'll be able to do that here today because we would need to craft the actual full document, which would need itself be a resolution to amend 234-2022. I would agree with you that we shouldn't do that. I just think we'll need to get that ready by a future meeting, but I don't believe that that delays what the library board can do. We can just invite the library board to give us a name. We can choose to abide by that procedure now, and then we can craft a resolution to make that official, is what I would propose. Because otherwise, we're, I mean, the alternative is we need to start wordsmithing and creating that document right here and now.
But we can vote on the action portion of amending that. Well, can, can I offer a similar but opposing view?
Sure.
So our resolution was crafted almost verbatim by the state's R C W. They're both vague on this point, which means, in my mind, it gives the latitude at any given time to make those adjustments.
Right.
It, this may be great for right now, but there may be something in our future, 10 years from now, if this doesn't get changed, where that process doesn't work. There's nothing in here that says where the appointed person comes from to the mayor. I, I appreciate that the spirit that the library board wants to maintain appear, and I support that wholeheartedly. I just don't think we need to change it.
Well, what I would, my, my top preference would be that we would set something in terms of a guideline to say, this is how the council chooses, like, is a, is a guideline rather than a hard line with it, because I think the absence of any specification can lead to a feeling of arbitrariness in the future, that if it changes for a different reason, people might start to say, well, why did it change? And what are they actually trying to get done and that kind of stuff?
For sure.
So I don't think we need to put it in stone to say that we can't go a different direction, but to put something on paper to say this is our recommended procedure is probably prudent.
I guess what I'm saying, I'm ready to make a motion to amend it with this paragraph, and that needs a second and a vote.
The.
You have a motion on the floor.
Okay, so you would like to make a motion that we add the second paragraph of the sentence from the old document?
Maybe the second paragraph of the, the replaced resolution 96-94, and insert that into our new 234 resolution.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, as stated by Councilman Buddris. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion, which I'm not going to try to, we'll have it in the notes, we'll get that written down before we leave tonight, David. And a second, that we add a paragraph to this.
234.
234-2022, that clarifies where the person would come from. So there's a motion on the floor, further discussion.
One of the discussions I'd like to add to that, by allowing and putting this in there, the city council and the mayor has a hard enough time trying to find people and solicit people for jobs and positions. I think this is totally acceptable. It was certainly acceptable under Mayor Gillen and the council at that time, and I see no reason why it shouldn't. Like I said, it probably was an oversight when we drafted that up. So I think for clarification, we all understand how things went, how we, the inception of the new board and all that, but when we're all gone, the next mayor, next council, future generations, this will be spelled out, you know, verbatim. What's the playing field? This doesn't take power away from anybody, it just assists in the, the process of filling that vacancy. I support the, the spirit behind it, but I can't vote on a resolution that's not currently crafted. So unfortunately, I will be voting no.
And I would say since this is, only because this is different than what the R C W says, I almost feel like we press forward, we would need to have our city attorney make sure, because that is, 96-94 is based on a law that is no longer on the books.
That's true.
So, and I, and I tried to look it up just now, and, and it's, it's been removed from, from the R C Ws because it's been.
96-94 no longer exists.
Well, no, I'm saying.
That's been replaced, that, that whole.
That's true.
Has been replaced in its entirety, and the R C W has changed, which is now, what, 2712.19?
Uh, 2712.19, yes.
Yes.
And so since I can't look at where the R C W that assisted in 96-94, because it's not into here anymore, I don't have a copy of it, I just, I would like to make sure that we're not opening up a different can of worms by adding language on.
Well, it's a, it's a roadmap. How do you propose right now, sorry for interrupting, but how do you propose now to hire, they're in a situation, what's the next step for the library? As I, as I said earlier, we can just invite the library to choose a name to send to us, and we can just agree to abide by that.
I would, I would actually hope they would. Please do.
According to what you have written?
No, it just says the appointment, it doesn't say where the appointment comes from.
Yeah. We can just agree to abide by the recommendation that the library board puts forth.
Jess, do you have that, or Mayor, do you have that on your table there, the 234? I don't have it pulled up.
I've got it on my computer. If you want to look it up.
I'll grab a copy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have the copy through this area.
Because I think it's very important that the library board be free to put a replacement in, in position as soon as possible.
I would want you guys to.
So what I'm understanding, we've got a motion on the floor and a second, and we're discussing that at the present time.
Correct.
Yeah. When the library board came to me, I didn't have a good answer, and I spent a considerable amount of time reading and reading the R C Ws. And I personally came up with the fact that I couldn't come up with any way that said where they were to get this number. But it's been, as it's also been said to me, that we can allow them to do just as was done before the board. In other words, in the city hall here at that time, we had a sheet, a signup sheet, and anybody who wanted to be part of the library board could sign up for that sheet, which it turned out there were seven. And they wound up getting put into a hat, and all seven of those names were drawn out of a hat individually, which I've got a copy, if anybody wants to know how that was done and who was picked. So from what I'm understanding is the council would extend that offer right now to a library that that could be done in the same way that they could.
Even further, I would say, I don't care how they pick their name. And I, as a council member, will vote yes on whatever name they recommend.
So if they give us one name?
Yeah. I would encourage that person to come from that body, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, you guys are agreeing to stuff, but it's not in here, and that's the whole point, you're not going to be around forever.
I, I agree, we need to get it fixed, David. I just don't feel like there's anything for us to vote on this meeting. I think we can unlock them to go forward now, and we can fix that in a subsequent meeting.
Well, we're agreeing on amending that, with the actual typing of it's not going to take place. And I'll just furthermore, right now, I'm reading, it says, this is how the new, our new ordinance reads, vacancies shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term as soon as possible in the manner in which members of the board are regularly chosen. So what's regularly chosen? We don't have a, we don't.
That would be defined by the R C W.
Well, it goes back to section three, library board members shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council. But does that say it's regularly appointed? And it's contradicted over here, the initial setup is done that way.
And how about section nine?
The library board shall be appointed by the mayor within 60 days from the receipt of names approved by the city council.
But that's specifically for initial, the word initial is in there for that section.
How about if you'd say it's the attorney tomorrow morning, and how's him?
Oh, geez. $300 bucks an hour.
I'm trying to clear it up for, for future, you know, this document's going to serve for a long time, and there's going to be more vacancies, and trying to clear up that anybody could read this and come to the same answer. It's not going to be subjective, it's going to be objectively looked at, this is the plan, go. And right now, the way it's written, there's, I think there needs to be more language like Mayor Gillen and the council put in this, and I'm not sure, Joe, you, you looked something up, but it's not there, I don't know if that was in the R C Ws or the stuff at this time, but I.
I, I can't say language like that is conspicuously absent from the current.
Do you sort of see right there this part? Because, you know, I would ask a couple of fellow colleagues to, the board has worked, libraries work really hard at this, and they're faced with a new librarian and a board member. It just behooves us to do, you know, do what we can to help to push along this process. And I'll also, I commend council members for their generosity, they'll say we'll do this, but I want to, I want to put it in writing as well, yes.
I agree. I, you too.
Because we don't be here forever.
Yeah.
I say we'll.
I agree with you, David, the only difference between you and I on this is that I, I want to make sure that we have a particular document we're voting on, possibly at the next meeting, having them unlocked in the meantime, but I agree with your argument wholeheartedly.
I think what I'm hearing is everyone on the council is hoping that the library will find the replacement for that term.
If it's spelled out, we can.
What I'm trying to say is it's, it's not spelled out that you. What I'm trying to say is it's not spelled out that you can't. Sometimes, just because it doesn't say what you can, the fact that it says that you can't is as powerful.
There's no restrictions on us behaving in this manner for this election if we want to, that I can find.
Well, it does say, to rebuttal against what Joe was saying, and as pointed out, the vacancies shall be filled in a manner regularly chosen, and then go back to section three, the library board members shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the council. So that's still, that puts it on the mayor.
Nowhere does that give us any right to do anything if you want to get religious at all.
Well, if you had a hostile mayor, you're absolutely correct. And maybe that's where it needs to be cleaned up. I don't think it gets cleaned up as fast as you guys want to have a fifth member on the library board.
Which is why we're looking to enable you to walk out of here with a game plan immediately.
Yeah. If, I mean, if we want to push forward, I just, I want it to go past council, I'm sorry, legal council, to make sure that we can put language in this ordinance, I'm sorry, this resolution, that doesn't necessarily contradict the RCW, but just adds to what the RCW says. Like I said in the very beginning, people way smarter than me put this RCW on the books. So, I have to have faith that they knew something we didn't.
So at the present moment, I think we ought to call a vote here.
Sure.
On this particular motion, and if you wish to make another motion that says I'd get hold of our attorney in the morning, that would mean nothing would happen tonight, but...
Well, by my motion, or my motion was just that we agreed to amend that with that, that we put that paragraph in there.
To amend 2342022 with a sentence clarifying where this name comes from.
Yes, to accept that paragraph, I guess, whether, maybe amend, but to, that's the correct terminology, but to accept that language for amendment. Whether we can amend it tonight, or not, is another story, but...
Yeah.
Did you guys see? You read it, but I don't know if those guys read it.
Does the council have further discussion, or are we ready for the votes?
I'm ready.
Is Levi still with us?
Levi?
I am, but this conversation has been really choppy, so I haven't heard probably half of what you guys have said.
Sorry about that.
Well, I will just, whatever the vote is, I'll abstain, because I'm not clear on everything that's going on right now.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor to amend 2342022 with a sentence clarifying where the name comes from. That's basically...
Right, amended with language out of the...
Out of the preceding one?
Yes.
Okay.
The paragraph.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the same?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
So, I think we have a tie vote there. We have 2-2.
And Levi is abstained.
Is abstained, yes. 2-2-0.
2-2-1.
2-2.
2-2-1.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
So you break the tie?
I prefer not to do that.
You have to.
I have to? Says who? I always ask that question, and I'm not being facetious about that, but when somebody says I have to, I want to know...
When there's a tie, the MRSC states that the mayor breaks the tie.
Okay, well, I would like somebody, I would like somebody to produce that document.
We'll have that for you in a second.
Huh?
We'll have that here in a second for you. Because I don't know the answer 100% if you could abstain, or if you...
Yeah, maybe I can abstain too. I would like the council to make these decisions. It seems to me that...
For what happens in a deadlock.
Yeah. My next proposal would be that we turn this over to our council, our city attorney, and ask him to, if it's the council's idea that we want to have something written, but they want to have it be legal, I have no problem with it being correct.
We can do that. I don't know if we can just leave it deadlocked and move on, or if you have to come to a decision, I don't know that part. They have tie football games, best, I mean, they have, I don't know if we just leave it at a tie.
Well, if you can produce a document, in fact, I'm, I'm going to have to think about this, I'm going to need deliberation time to weigh it.
I'm going through the MRSCs right now, the handbook.
You guys can hum the theme of Jeopardy or something like that.
The only way I would break this tie, sounds like it might not be legal with the MRSC land, because I would, the only way I would go for it is to turn it over to our city attorney to approve this language before I said yea or nay, so anything I would say at this point is not relevant.
Here, here's a sentence out of the MRSC. I just had it.
Which one, 2712190?
No, this is, this is in the MRSC website.
Oh, okay.
And it says, um...
It's one of those things we've all read, but we just can't find it again right now.
I think it said something to the effect that the state does not have a rule... So...
the tie vote on that instance, which would imply to me that the implication is the mayor can the rest of the time, but that's implicit, not explicit.
And there's a section in there about when appointing a council member, the mayor can break a tie.
I haven't seen it in that document.
It does say here, with regard to abstentions, if a city does not have a rule, abstentions by one or more council members may make it impossible for a final action to be taken on a matter in particular where a majority vote before council is needed.
Let me ask you a question.
Although it says, it says here, I'm sorry, in cities and towns operating under a mayor-council form of government, it's found that mayor may vote only in case of a tie vote of the council. However, statutes for each class of city may further limitations in which a mayor may break, may tie, break a tie vote.
So you use the term "may"?
"May" is...
May?
Yes, the mayor may vote only in the case of a tie vote.
Okay. So, if we're hung on this issue, the only way that I'm going to change my vote is if we start drafting the document, so I guess I'll open up the word out of here.
You want it in word?
Sure, I guess so. Because I'm not going to vote on a document that doesn't exist, so I guess if we craft the document, then I can change my vote.
Can I use my computer to do it, or just do it in person?
I'll see if I can do it online.
Would you like a document that doesn't exist to use as a sample?
Well, yeah, we can take language from it, but the thing is, we're going to have to craft the number, because we can only vote on a resolution that has, I mean, it needs to be an actual resolution for us to vote on it.
Doc?
I'm attaching it to you right now.
Do you have the next resolution number?
I'm sending it to you right now.
Do we vote on a resolution here?
242, got 2023, I believe.
Last meeting, it's in the, it's in that Excel spreadsheet, is it not?
Resolution of the city council, the city attorney. To...
So we're amending it, we're not changing the actual 234, we're amending it, so you don't need 234.
I think we stay with 234, is what you're saying.
Oh, we're just going to amend 234?
Which you can only do by another resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is, which is, the crux of my vote is that we, you can only amend a resolution through another resolution, so therefore, to have a vote, there must be a resolution to vote on, so we need to craft it.
Or I can cut and paste it, just send that to you. Just, you know, just type in the whole thing.
I'm not going to type in the, well...
Well, just cut and copy and paste it.
Yeah, I guess if you, your mouse, having a mouse is going to be nice.
Do you want to, you want to use this computer here to you?
No, I was working.
Oh, you want it?
I was working.
Okay, here, just, there's the document with the subject.
Okay, and then we have the existing, the current resolution of whatever that is.
234?
Yeah. Right, so it's the word document that was adopted. Okay. In order to keep moving with this, I believe that if I remember my Roberts Rules of Order correctly, a motion to table takes a higher precedence, I motion to table this discussion until later in the meeting, so that we can talk about other items while I'm crafting this. So, motion to table.
I'll second it.
That's going to be the end of the meeting, basically.
Yeah.
Because you're going to want to take part in everything else.
Yeah, but I'm saying I can, I can type while I, I can listen while I type.
Okay, so, moving on, the next subject up is an update on the cemetery.
I hope we technically...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't second it, but...
So we're going to table...
Motion to table.
To the end of that.
And who, you made the motion, Stephen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're going to withdraw your motion at the moment, Stephen? No?
He doesn't have to.
No, it's still, it's still deadlocked, so it's still tied.
Okay, we're just going to table it. So there was a motion by Stephen and a second by David?
David.
To table this until the amendment is crafted? Any further discussion?
Uh, real quick, so we're voting to table the amendment that we're discussing that I don't know anything about, right?
Yes, they're going to, I'm going to move this over to the, over closer to the area where the people are talking.
Thanks.
Joe, you want to see us, Levi, I can hear you now?
Levi, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, can you, so can you hear me, Levi?
Yes, I can.
So we're going to table this motion while Stephen is crafting a, an amendment to the resolution 2342022, which will state where the name comes from for replacement when somebody retires, leaves, or whatever reason.
Okay.
And during that table time, we're going to continue on with the city council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, at the present moment, we are going to have a cemetery update.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, sorry about that, this is going...
Procedurally, that's fine.
Yeah, we're procedurally way out in the left field here.
All in favor of tabling?
So, all in favor of tabling the motion until the amendment is crafted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the cemetery update. I have a couple of quotes, which I will provide to the council there, that were received by David Buddris for buying equipment, and they were, oh, I don't know, in the $12,000 range for a lawnmower. Is that about right, David?
Um, they are.
Yeah, let's see here, 12,047, no, 1,000?
13,000 to 14,000.
13,000 to 14, yeah, 12,907. So those are the first two quotes that have come in, one from John Deere and one from, I believe that's basically Troy built?
Toro.
Toro.
X-Mark, the company's Horizon.
Brand name is not one that I'm familiar with, but...
Who were, is that Pape and who were the dealerships we're dealing with?
The John Deere would be RDO, and that is, that is a state contract bid number, considerable savings to the city. We are on the list, the former regime, they, they signed us up on the state contract, we're on the roster, so that saves us, well, looks like about almost $4,000 on John Deere, here.
Nice.
And the other one, they used to, they're, go by a different handle, it's Horizon now, but they, they, so many companies are switching in the last few years, but it's not a credit union, don't get confused with that, but they are a dealership.
Anybody wish to see these?
Sure.
They, they're out on Francis in Spokane, and they, I got my paperwork in line. They're owned, this particular mower, mowers they sell there, they're industrial, commercial type, both of them are actually, contractor models or construction, heavy-duty models, they're not just the ones you go to your average home center and buy for residential. So the quality of them is up there, on a, you know, higher, higher range, and as I was, as I explained at Horizon, Toro owns X-Mark, and it's an X-Mark machine, that's their moniker on it, that's their decal, but it's red, it looks like a Toro, but it's X-Mark, and it's, the company's own, Toro parts will fit on it, and, you know, back and forth they'll swap, so Tommy, is it, it's a Toro?
So it's the same company and somebody else has changed their name?
Bought it and...
Yeah. Put their name on it.
Correct, exactly.
Very common to be called.
And they're the higher of the two, they called this a bid assist, I'm not sure exactly, because the guy I was talking to was sales, the, another guy that does, has more knowledge about it, he was not available, but they got back to us, or to me, right away, had to pay tax on both of them, of course, but they are $14,474.11, the red machine one, the X-Mark, and the tax and all the goodies, which there's not a lot of frills on them, but they're not decked out in what they could put on. It is $13,939.58, so there's not a huge spread there, so...
Have they bid bagging attachments if we wish to pick up?
I, I believe...
Did they, I didn't see in that one, I haven't had a chance to go through it.
I'd have to follow up for sure on that, but so everybody knows, these are rear discharge mowers.
Okay. Other than online, I've never actually visually seen one, also.
Yeah.
It's a rear discharge.
And further... And, uh, further, I believe it's, I've called around a lot of places and some people are hungry and wanna help you, and others don't care about answering your, their phone, but, uh, I'm still, I haven't given up. And, uh, for a push behind mower, self-propelled push, well, mower, and a leaf blower and a string trimmer, weed whacker, straight trimmer, brush cutter, they all have different names. Uh, there's a place, Ace Hardware, not Ace Hardware, Ace Equipment on Francis, eight oh eight, I think it was, three East Francis. And, um, the push mower, the range, it's, I don't think a thirty-inch, a thirty-inch would be too, the deck would be too wide for going between stones, headstones up there, so the, the next step down is a twenty-two inch. And gas powered, self-propelled, and, um, bagger, you know, that kind, all that jazz on them. And the range on that, depending, was, uh, they had several different, they had a Toro and had some other brands, but it ranged from three seventy to six hundred and seventy-nine was the, the range. And then the string trimmer, um, we're doing a lot of research what they all suggested, and from, and the guy I was talking to did, did exactly that, most cemeteries and parks for twenty-three years, suggested a straight shaft, this, 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 and that, and one of those, I believe, was around, uh, right at four hundred dollars for the, the one he recommended for that type of work. And a leaf blower, I think it was around three hundred, two ninety, right at three hundred. So, everybody's aware of that. The string trimmer is a steel. And if you go on the website and you look up the ten best weed whacker string trimmers out there, this site will tell you this, 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 and that, and then you go to the next one, it has an opinion, and it's just reversed, so. But, the ones that are, seem to be the most popular are Steel, Husqvarna, and Echo. I didn't say them in order, Echo, Steel, and Husqvarna, are, are in that order from first to third. And sometimes those get flip-flopped, but Echo, so, I guess, at this point, price and preference would play into that. But they, one of the commonalities is, is that they're straight shaft, dual head, bump to, um, let out string. Yep, yep. They've, uh, you know, had really good reviews with Echo, but I personally, I, I don't know, as long as it works, it's fine, but I, I've been around Steel and Husqvarna. But they're, they're all good quality, so I guess flip a coin, which you want, you want, price-wise. Leaf blowers or blowers, I, I, I don't really know, that's kinda up in the air, whatever, if it blows and works, but it's, it'll be around three hundred dollars.
I would say that's the same kind of piece of equipment, and if you want one to use every single day of the week, then you need to buy a good one.
Well, yeah, these prices I'm, um, telling you guys is, it's all commercial grade, industrial, commercial grade.
Are you waiting on any bids from anybody else, or?
Currently, if I can get ahold of a guy, Adams Tractor, they have, um, like I said, that's one of the people that, if you get through to them and they put you over here, they hang up on you, and so it's been a challenge. My goal is to go up there personally and rattle their cage, you know, and look and get them face-to-face. I don't know, what does council, the mayor, or what does the mayor want, at least three bids, or what do you feel comfortable with? Ten?
If, if, no, if there is three people who are, that you can get to even service you as a customer nowadays, you're working real hard.
Right.
It's just, times have changed, I understand exactly what you're saying. Some people will put you on hold when you're ready to spend fourteen thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, that means nothing to them.
Thanks for bringing, that reminds me, I'd like to also add that, the John Deere dealer, he, he's not your typical dealer, he's, he's in the, um, state roster bid, he's different, but he's John Deere affiliated. He's a salesman for him, but in a different department. But he estimates that availability for the John Deere probably around May to get it. Now, the X-Mark, I, he never mentioned, so I don't have a timeline on that one, I don't have that one nailed down. So, we gotta keep that in mind as well.
So, I think.
Availability.
We're going forward with this, I think we oughta definitely get our ducks in a row here and try to get something locked down within the next couple of weeks here, so that we don't lose.
Yeah, pole position.
Yes. And I realize that people are not walking up every day and buying these kind of pieces of equipment, but John Deere, and I'm sure X-Mark's gonna tell you the same thing, they have to get in line to get them. And we're not talking about Washington State anymore, we're talking nationwide, they get on and get into this pool to get access to their equipment, so if we wait for a long period of time, we're gonna find out it's gonna be the end of the summer.
Well, part of that equation, I think it was the John Deere dealer told me that they've had a heck of a run on this lately, within the last six months, well, a year to current. So, but yes, there's still a problem with manufacturing, industry-wide of getting stuff. It's, um, sign of the times, you know, we have to adjust to. But this should give us a ballpark, you know, roughly, I think under, for, under twenty thousand, we should be set up.
Okay.
Whether we go that high, but I, I think we'd comfortably say that it would be no more than that. You take, with all this, it would be, I wouldn't look for it going any higher than that.
Okay.
Hopefully, keep it well below that, too.
Thanks for the help, put back David, any, any input from the rest of the council on that, thoughts?
Thank you for giving a link on that. I wish I could provide more, but. I am not an expert on this equipment, obviously, John Deere is a name that everyone knows and loves and pays dearly for, but they work. I just wanna solve a piece of equipment that's gonna be around for the duration and.
Absolutely.
Has a little bit of sturdiness to it, shall we say.
Did they, did any of them offer any type of, um, lasting, when the lasting guarantee or?
They do come with warranties. But I might add, too, for the record, both these companies are, they're not fly-by-night, they're solid companies, they're, going ahead in the future here for parts and availability for service, it should.
I was just thinking that, that if one of them offers a better deal, better warranty than what the other one does, the desire has escalated like thirty-nine percent. Is all.
I think that's on their website.
Not a big deal.
I guess, to answer your question, they are warranted, I know, but for how long, I can't remember.
Any further discussion about the cemetery update on this time, at least as far as, uh, the city moving forward with cemetery maintenance?
I didn't hear, all of what David had to share, I caught the gist of it. So, is bagging it the only way that it's done at that level?
As far as picking it up, and, and I think, from what I heard last time, maybe we wouldn't bag it every time. So, you munch sometimes and just leave it lay there and, right, bag it up every second or third mowing? Or this time of year, you would bag, and I believe MKV still owes us a cleaning.
Yeah.
From last year, so hopefully, the leaves will be cleaned up for this first effect. Other than the fact that we already have leaves on the trees that have never come down. And, you know, we had a pretty strange fall there, where we went from fall to winter in twenty-four hours, and many of the trees are still covered with leaves. Did any of you have, the bagging is something that, you know, I think you'd wanna be able to do?
Yeah, I know.
When you want to, so it's a, it's an option that you would wanna have available to you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, yeah.
So, there's a, there's a couple pieces of equipment that we have bids, and it sounds like David's gonna try and get some more, and I would think, you know, when, at our next meeting, maybe if we're ready, we oughta pull the trigger on that and get the piece of equipment coming anyway.
Okay, I would agree.
And was there a mention there about lease versus buy that I missed? Lease versus buy?
Or not lease, but, uh, finance?
Financing, yeah.
I was, I did not ask them about that, but I certainly could, being that we're on the state bid, I don't know.
They might not.
If that would, I'll find out.
I mean, interest rates aren't as favorable as they used to be, so it might, I mean, it used to be, it was basically free money, why not? Maybe it's not that anymore, but I think it'd be prudent to at least know, can we?
Can adapt.
Yeah.
I will say, I had a rancher client just this morning present me with, um, I mean, it, it's a Kubota, but hopefully, maybe there's some pressure in the industry to, hey, we're doing it, we should do, but it was zero percent for.
Couple of years?
Couple, twenty-four months, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
And, I mean, they got the cash, but they were like, well, shoot, you're giving me free money?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that steered me in this direction was what the professionals are using. That was number one, is kinda pick their brain in what works and what brands seem to have the longevity, and will take somewhat of a beating, you know, different people running them, and those, those two stood out. There's a couple others, but I don't think, um, one called Grasshopper, I like the front deck we talked about, but it doesn't come any smaller than a hundred and one inches. That, that would be too big for that, but it's a little bit bigger machine lengthwise, so that's one of the concerns, is with the zero turns or the size, being able to turn in the rows and not, not take five acres to turn it around, per se. But they also had the zero turns, you're on the right path with those, and they recommend a rear discharge that alleviates a lot of extra time with your blow, you know, blowing the, um, headstones or the ones that are flush, you know, flush. And also, you can trim, if anybody's run along more much, you know, they got the side discharge, you have that chute hanging out there, you can't get up next to anything, stone, you know, whatever, this, you can, you know, so. That'll speed things up, too, so.
So, MKV did not use a push mower between the headstones? That was part of the weed eater's job. I can attest that that, that if you're an artist with lawn mowing equipment, a weed eater becomes one of the brushes in your palette. You know, you become pretty, pretty effective with a weed eater, what it'll do, a string trimmer.
A skilled operator can do a lot.
That's how they did in between the stones, so the zero turns went up and down the aisles with the decks as close to the stones as possible, and then two guys spent the whole day weeding, that's all they did.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, that's something we could look at, too, if we really need to push, I don't know if the parks or the other small areas, if we use the push or mower type, so.
I don't know, it's gonna be a learning experience, I suppose.
With regard to the string trimmer, two cents worth is maybe, if push comes to shove, we can find one that has an exchangeable head for a brush cutter?
I do believe some, those are options that you can. Um, however, it was recommended from one of the guys that you want one that is, um, designed for specific purposes, in other words, to cut grass and brush, and then you get into the attachment stuff, for whatever reason, I can't remember what it was now, but yeah, but they do, you can do that, Joe, you, you can get those.
I just think there would be a rare occasion where having a heavier-duty brush cutter, weight on it, would benefit the city in some of these ditches and hollows and what have you.
I believe the city, didn't you purchase a, a walk behind, or a push?
We have a walk behind weed eater that's twenty-four inches.
Yeah, okay.
You know, a big, big one.
Okay.
It's got a twelve-horse engine on it, or cutting through some of the fields.
Okay.
Okay, I think we'll put the cemetery in bed, are we ready to go back to, uh, our resolution?
Give it another shot. So, there's two documents there, one I will change my vote for, the other I won't. One is the, a, a reduced adaptation of the old one, I think it still keeps in the original spirit, I typed most of the language there, I just didn't include the parts that I didn't think were meaningful to it in any way, but it still has the core of it, that's the one that I say adopted from resolution. And I tried to highlight just the parts that I changed from the previous document. There's a carrot in there that represents the removal of, um, the, the current one on the books talked about why we removed the old one, which was that the RCW's changed, but now that old one doesn't exist, cause we superseded it, so I removed that section, because this is just replacing the one from last year, is the only thing that matters. The difference between the one that I will vote for and the one that I won't is that technically, the old resolution says that the library board will provide a list of recommendations, and then they will be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council, which means that the council and the mayor still have a hand in selecting which one of their recommendations get approved, which is not something I'm interested in. So, what my verbiage says is that the library board will provide a recommendation, one per vacant position, and that that recommendation will be appointed by the mayor and the council. What it does is it removes the agency of the mayor and the council in putting, in making that decision.
Well, the language here is, yeah, with the consent of the city council.
Which, to note, the old version still said, after it said that the library would provide the list of names, it still said the, the appointment of the mayor and consent of the city council, which is still in the current RCW, I don't think we can remove that, all we're talking about is what leads up to that point.
Is there only one copy of those?
Uh, yeah, but you can pass it around. Here's.
Okay.
Here's the one that's based off of the old resolution. Again, I didn't type everything in there word-for-word, because I thought there's just parts of it that don't mean anything, it's, it's still really wordy, but.
It should be a list.
The copy is still open on Joe's machine, if you wanna just copy and paste the paragraph in there word-for-word, we can look at that variant as well, but.
So, this is the one that you personally would vote for?
No, that one. I believe the library board should have the same level of autonomy that this council has, they should select their own member, and the, and the mayor and the council should have nothing to do with it other than what we're required to do by law, which is appointment, uh, by the mayor and consent of the council. And I wish that the council would only consent to the name recommended by the library board.
So, now what this says, the library board should forward to the city council a list of.
List of recommendations.
Yes.
So, that means there could be one open, and they could give you four names, and then it would be up to us to figure out which one of the four, that's the language that was in the old resolution.
I have no problem doing that, I will do it the same way I did it last time.
David, when you're done, can I read that one?
I'll throw the names, we'll go in the hat, and I will pick a number name out of the hat, and I will, that way I'm not reluctant and bothered with actually picking the person.
Did you see the, the one that's more based off of?
I haven't, I haven't seen that one.
This is, this is the one that's more based off the old.
And the other one, basically, the other one basically says that they will produce a person?
A, one recommendation per vacancy.
So, in other words, the board has.
They already picked the person they wanted, I have no problem with that either, that's, either way, I'm, I'm going to pick it the same way.
Do you see the pros and cons of that, um, I don't, input, I'm looking for input here.
That way I don't stack the library board the way that I think it's.
Yeah?
And they get stacked, it's the library board's problem.
That's right. Why, like I say, if you supply me four names, I'm going to pick them out of a hat, I'm not going to look and pick the individual.
My, my only issue with Stephen's version is that I wanna make sure. My only issue with Stephen's version is that I want to make sure it does not violate, doesn't get the city in trouble against the RCW.
Which one, the one that says, the one?
Mine, yeah. Well, you have that consideration about both of them though, don't you?
Lesser to that one because it's a recommendation, this is basically stating, this is the way it will be. So, and I don't want to, I've made it very clear, I'm gonna make it clear again, I am trying hard to keep the city out of these libraries' business.
Which is my primary consideration.
However, I don't want to get us into a legal problem by making a declaration like that.
So if you go with the language that's off of the old stuff, then maybe Joe's vote changes and we're good.
Yeah, so...if we're looking for a resolution, I mean, if we're looking for a end to this discussion this evening, then I'm inclined to go with the one that's in front of David right now.
Or you can vote in Stevens with the consent that the lawyer agrees to it.
I don't want to have to come back and undo.
Well, I get that. But it's okay, what this does here, the library board shall forward to the city council a list of recommendations, plural, and members shall be appointed by the mayor with consent of the city council. So if you have multiple, walk this through a minute. If you have five people that say, well, first of all, they, the board has to come up with recommendations, they might only have one recommendation, or they might have three.
Yeah.
How are they gonna determine, they're already doing kind of the legwork, who, from past archived deals, dealing with this, you know, past boards, I've seen how the president of the library board went to the mayor, this person, whatever, would like to re-up, we recommend this. There wasn't multiples, so I, that just kind of, let me look at this one again, that kind of pigeonholes us. I do agree with Joe on that, this here, it limits at one recommendation per vacant position.
For me, the key word in that one is the word "shall."
So at that point, the library would be doing all the footwork and we just...
Does Levi have any input? Still with us, Levi?
I'm fishing my phone out, yep, I'm here.
What's your thoughts?
Um, well...
I know you haven't seen these.
Right, I haven't, so I'm just basing what I'm thinking off of what I'm hearing, but the only concern with the one is the fact that it's "shall" and...
They both say "shall."
Okay, I'm trying to figure out what the debate between the two is right now.
Well, the one is, the city coun, or the, the board will pick one to, one recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
And the other one says the city, they shall forward a list of recommendations, and the members shall be appointed by the mayor and consent of the council. One's singular or one's plural?
So in other words, the board would either be making the decision as to who comes before the mayor and the city council, or they would be giving us a bunch of options.
Right. Or the mayor, actually.
Okay.
Did I sound out right?
So I'm trying to understand here exactly what is the concern?
It's a difference between, is there a forcing function or not to make the library board pick a singular name?
Okay, how does the present member of the library board feel about that?
I hate to speak for everybody, but I don't know why we can't determine that ourselves and bring one name to you.
Because one of my concerns is historically, the feedback that I got from previous library board members is that the city has not really known where our boundaries were between us and the library board. I think when we put the resolution in play, we asked a lot more of the library board. In turn, they deserve their autonomy, which is to also select one name by whichever means they can. Now, because of the RCW, we can't make that fully in their control, because the RCW says, forces us to be involved. But what we can do is codify this to say, we will abide by your selection, just like when we replaced Peter with Chris, we made the selection, that was the deal. We had to come to one name, we couldn't pass three names to Jess and make him deal with it. We had to do that as a body, and that's, that's the counterpoint of the responsibility is the bother that comes along with it, potentially. And what it does for us then is that it means that we don't get involved in the politics of, well, we gave you three names because the library board was split, and you're actually, you like that person more than this person, and all this kind of political stuff, when it's like, this is the library board, let them do their thing, we have a city to care for, let's just keep our roles and responsibilities separate.
You know, you touched on a very good point, Stephen, is, would that get into a popularity contest? Would that...
Let that be our fault, let that be our responsibility, not...
Is that a burden that they're willing, I mean, I can't...
So I, like I said, I can support Stephen's position as long as it passes a legal test. I mean, I just, I want to make sure that...
And I get your concern, I just, to me, it doesn't pass the level of risk that I feel like it would be rejected, because it's us choosing to abide by that methodology. I don't see the RCW restricting us from being able to put such a commitment...
All you're doing is you're putting the library board in the hat, and the library board's pulling out of that, that's what you're doing.
No, I understand completely.
But I get, I get your concern, it's, the RCW was unfortunately vague, so now it becomes our problem.
But if you get a rogue, my only concern is if you get a rogue board in there, and somebody wants on and they don't like this person, that really limits their chances too. That's what I could see, I could see happening with just them picking it. Yes, it's great to have their responsibility and it's their...
But your alternative in that situation, David, is having the mayor of the council pick someone against the library board's wishes, which in this town would be a recipe for a really interesting firework show.
Right. I, probably, you know, could have...
And I'm not, that isn't a comment about this library board, that's just talking about, say, forty years in the future, it'll still be quite a firework show.
It's a recipe for, it's a possibility, probability could happen. I just...
So are we going back to our original motion?
So I would say that there needs, yeah, now that we have a document, David probably wants to accept a friendly amendment to go forward with one of these two documents, but because before, the motion, the second, was not in relation to a document, so David's motion should adopt one of those documents, and then the vote goes on with it.
I guess I could put it out there and we can discuss between the two. So we can call them document one or two, what's the...
We'll call it document singular and plural?
Yes, okay, the singular and the plural, that's what we'll call it, okay. My motion is to amend Resolution 242...
234.
No, it's the next resolution, Jess.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes, as I was. Motion is to amend Resolution 242 with language...
It is 242, it amends 234.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to amend 234 with Resolution 242 with language, allowing the library board with one recommendation per vacant position. I guess we'll call this document one.
So the singular?
Singular.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Stephen. Yeah. So we've got a motion to accept the singular version as an amendment, but now, excuse me, as 242 2022 to replace 234 2022?
Twenty-three.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It's 242 2023.
2023, good catch, thank you. No further dis...
No discussion, we don't want to say anything.
We might have said it all already.
Okay. We beat it up pretty good, so...
Okay. All in favor of accepting that amendment, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
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 That's three.
I'll say aye.
That's three, all aye, you didn't make, all opposed, saying the same?
That was four, Jess.
There was four there, sorry. All abstained. So we've got four, zero, one.
We're making you work tonight, there, huh?
Well, I think the person sitting behind Stephen here is working harder than I am.
This is going through whiteout, as you speak.
Motion passes, four, zero, one, very good, council.
Good.
So, did I understand that that's, that we are going to send that to our city attorney to approve that?
I would probably, I would recommend you do, mine just so quick, to satisfy our curiosity and to cover our bases.
That's the reason.
Yeah, I don't, that's smart.
Next thing on the agenda is the treasurer's report. There is no treasurer's report to speak of, there is a report there that gives you all an idea of where the cemetery endowment is, and you have to do some addition and subtraction there to see it, because everything in the LGIP is grouped into one big thing, and there are many accounts, there's three of them, I believe, one is for the endowment, one is for the maintenance, and I don't recall what the third one was called.
Improvement.
Improvement, which, which we believe is also part of the cemetery. We think that's the one that actually, the money comes out of that we use for maintaining the cemetery.
So, I'm reading this, I guess a sheet that was handed out, I'm trying to understand, the interest it shows under the cemetery endowment, is that for a year or a month? What is that?
That's the one thing that we do not know from that report. We don't know the timeframe, whether that interest is from conception, when it was moved from US Bank to the state.
I'm looking here.
In the email there, it says interest as of, interest to date, and if you look at those numbers, that would be the email from the treasurer. If you look at those numbers and do a little bit of math there, you'll see that that all comes out pretty close to it, if you round things off there.
Well, for the record, so, audience...
And the thing that we don't know is how much it's actually generating because of the timeframe there.
Right. It says February 2023, interests accrued at the end of February 2023, principal deposits on October 29th, 2021. And it tells how much the money market, the cemetery, cemetery endowment, development whole rent revenue, reserve, excuse me, water reserve, summer reserve, treasurer's reserve, governmental, intergovernmental reserve, and it says that, I'm taking this, that the lion's share of this LGIP fund is fifty-nine point seven four percent of it is cemetery endowment.
Correct.
And it's shown as October 29th, 2021, four hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-four cents. Now, you look at the total investment balance below this, and it doesn't give any dates, and it's still the same percent share of the investment pool, it shows a LGIP interest distribution of one thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, with a total investment balance of four hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. But it's that one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-three cents that I don't know if that...
And we don't know if that's a month?
Or a year.
Yeah, and fifty-nine percent of that, fifty-nine point seven four percent of that, fifteen hundred dollars would belong to the endowment.
Yes, and that is, those figures, this is the endowment figures I've all said, but the LG, a bunch of the funds, a bunch of other money's invested in it for a lot more, well, total seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents is the whole fund, but fifty-nine point seven four percent of that is the cemetery, which was the four hundred. I thought the cemetery had over five hundred thousand, but I, those figures, I don't know what happened.
Well, I think the cemetery, I think all of it lost some money in the first few months, the last few months.
Did they lose it, or was it fees and transferring?
Well, I think the stock market and everything went down, so I think we were affected by that, I think. I'm not an economist, so don't hold me to that one.
Well, if that's, if that is a year on that type of money, you know what I'm thinking?
I know exactly what you're thinking. I think we could conservatively make more money than that and attempt to conserve all the principal. So it would depend on what your level of comfort is for investing. I know from my point of view, mine is pretty conservative, but I think I could be a little more, have a little more risk involved and make several percent more than what the deputers that is making.
Six plus the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, so, yeah, I wonder if, there's the total investment balance is four hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, and I imagine that's the end of February, now, or, that's what it is now, what it started with in October of 21 was four hundred and thirty-six, so more than ten thousand, most eleven thousand difference, gain on that. If I'm reading this right...
From conception or when it was moved?
Yes, till February.
Those are some of the dates that we don't have on that piece of paper there.
I think we need to do some checking on that, because I'm looking at the LGIP from the secretary of the state, and their daily rate is consistently over four and a half percent.
Would that reflect October of 21 to now?
So if that figure was one month there, is that what that would figure, about four percent, the fifteen hundred?
No, I wouldn't do that, that's less than one percent. That's like a quarter of a percent.
Okay.
So I'm just saying March of 20, oh, I mean, look in October, see where, we were in October of 21, it was twenty-two.
I mean, the rate's been climbing so rapidly, I believe.
The rate through the entire month of October, the low is like two point eight, and it climbs steadily through the month to about three point one. So it's a far greater difference than...
I think we need some more information there, to continue on any further to make a good decision.
Agreed.
Yeah, but we have to, we have to look into it.
Yes.
We can't handle a quarter percent, that's just the risk. And I consider three percent with no risk, no, I'm sorry, I consider three, four percent with no risk, a reasonable rate of return.
Well, even more than that now with what T-bills are doing.
Yeah, so...
Well, eventually I'd like to see a cemetery endowment board take care of all these finances. That's, and I know Mr. Rock is an audience, and he'll probably has information on that that we've talked about over a year ago.
So we're gonna go off script here? So we're kind of go off script here a little bit, but I think it's important while we have an individual here. We didn't talk about this, about the cemetery update, but we asked, I asked Stan, it could have been Monday morning, it could have been last week when I talked to him originally, about possibly becoming a person on a committee and becoming more prominent and helping us guide and change our, our whole cemetery perspective here. We'd like to get a group going. And, I don't know if you want to speak for yourself, or you want me to bear for this hard conversation, Stan?
Oh, you go right ahead.
Well, Stan and I had, had a considerable talk one day, and he and his wife sat down, and he asked that they have a couple days to think about this. And a couple of the things I wrote down, as Stan said, you know, I spend a lot of time there working on the cemetery, but then in this particular time in his life, he thinks about days one at a time rather than he does four years in the future. And he represented a, an age number, which I won't bring up at the moment, but I, I can understand where he's coming from. And he's been a massive help, and still, he spent the day here, he's been here since, well, he got here when I was opening the door this morning. So he spent the day here working on the cemetery. But his, his, yes, again, and again, and again, and again. But his likelihood of wanting to take on another role that looks out for months was something that he and his wife decided that was not really something that was the best thing for his household, and I can totally understand that situation. So, we approached Dan, would, would he like to be the committee chairman, or the head of this group? And he respectfully denied that he would like to take that on, and he wants to finish the project, project he's on now. So, I don't know if any of you have talked to the three gyms, as we all refer to them, the three gyms and a, and a Stan. I've talked to the Stan, and I think a couple of you have talked to him throughout the day here this week.
I'm in contact with the gyms.
Yeah?
In my own conversation with Stan, I heard words of caution as to their interest. So, I will be casting a broader net, because I believe that we cannot burden the mayor with the additional responsibilities of the cemetery. So, I guess if that, if it comes to it, it'll be either them, or there could be a standing committee from the council, because someone needs to step up somewhere.
Or we advertise it for members to take over. I think, just my recommendation, as council's swamped with a lot of other stuff. And I'd like to, the, you know, citizens around here, if they obviously care about it, give them a voice and tell them to take, you know, some action into it.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Stan?
The only thing I'd add is that part of my problem with taking on a leadership role in that would be more of a personal problem than anything, because the things that I've been working on the last year or so for the cemetery, I could do pretty much on my own. And the project I'm working right now doesn't look like much fun to a lot of people, but I'm enjoying it, I'm having a good time doing it. My stress level would go up substantially if I was trying to lead a group of people that were all involved in working on the cemetery, like what Denise is having to work with on the library board. Anytime you get a board together that's responsible to the council and the mayor, there's a stress level there, and, and working with the people in the group, for me, becomes a lot more stressful than sitting in the back room working on the data. And I'm old enough that I don't need to do that anymore. And I used to take that kind of stress for a paycheck, and now I don't get paychecks, and so I, I'm trying real hard to avoid the stress. And I'll just let it sit at that.
Well, keep in mind, we're going to have a distillery come in, hopefully, and help prepare for the stress.
Maybe you could rub that with the tasting, I understand.
Well, that doesn't affect me at all.
No, we appreciate your, your honesty, and, and, I mean, it's, it's something that, you know, it, it's a responsibility, and not everybody's going to want to do-
Unless, of course, the distillery would produce methanol, in which case I could buy some and make model airplane fuel out of it.
There you go.
There you go.
Do you want to drink that?
I was going to ask, while we're on the subject of Stan, in your research, you've been quite extensive here in the last couple of years, or year. Did you ever find any documentation that concerns me with the financial end of it, where this endowment money, the requirements for that, for the, mainly the IRS status, the tax exempt status, because we don't have a board or trustees involved. Did you ever see, where did, have you come across any documentation in that aspect? Now that confused you, sorry.
Not that part of it specifically, the, the, the things that I learned in the last year or so come out of council meeting minutes that were, that were recorded as part of creating the endowment fund initially. And there was a cemetery board created as a part of that original resolution. And according to the minutes, the cemetery board at that time was not particularly effective at attacking core issues. They were looking for peripheral things to talk about that didn't really affect how the cemetery ran, and they would bring their concerns back to council. And council didn't feel that the concerns were important enough to spend much effort on it. And the cemetery board, after a few years, fairly quickly tapered off, and the, the head of the board resigned, and the, after that, the, there was hardly any mention of the cemetery board in the minutes for several years. And then the second resolution came along, in which case the council and the mayor passed a resolution that took back control and authority over the cemetery, and basically reversed the decision to have a board.
I guess where I stand, and so I'm clear with the council members and stuff and everybody, my concern is more in the endowment, not necessarily the day-to-day operations and the board. I understand the two, but where I, when I mention a board, I guess a trustee, trustees, somebody I, if my information is correct, the inception of this, I think, wasn't Mr. Paul Yolan, the mayor?
Yes.
At this time? And I think he kind of took control of that investment end of it. It was wise and, and took, from what I can ascertain, he watched over that fund. Well, the problem with that, he has since passed, and now, I think, my own personal, well, I know that we can do better than what we have it in now. And that's where I come from when I say a board or trustees, is to go manage that aspect of it. And what little digging around I have done, it has come up that if you don't have somebody, a board, they could, call them board members or trustees or whatever, that you could be out of, out of compliance with IRS for your tax-free exemption. That'd be, that's my only concern, or one of my major concerns about the whole deal. Yes, I, I'd like a board to kind of take the pressure off of everybody, or the, the mayor and the council, but, you know, kind of ride herd on that too, but I don't know necessarily if you need one does all, or if you, but definitely the endowment, the financial end of it, I think is a very important aspect, when people have given a substantial amount of money to this for a purpose, and I'd like to see it utilized for their wishes. And with that, I'll shut up, I'll yield. Questions answered?
There was nothing in any of the research I did over the last year or so that, that addressed that.
Okay.
Anything further anybody wants to add about the cemetery? I would like to move on and juggle a couple things here, and we'll do our executive session after everybody else is done, and we'll stay here and do that. We have a couple tech issues.
I got, I got to pass, we're running late enough, it was just informational updates, I don't think I was going to, I don't think any of it's critical for anyone to know here tonight.
Okay, any library report?
Hello, we're pretty much finished.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Comments by the mayor? We've had several things that have come to pass in the past month or so here, number one. We now have an active SAM account, which was done by Joe and Cynthia Wall with several hours, I'm quite sure, and a lot of perseverance to get through anything you do with the state. You learn a new vocabulary, and I'm quite sure several new acronyms, so.
I'll give you a new one today.
Will you? Yes. So a big thanks to Joe and Cynthia for that. The water purveyor report was also done, Joe handled that one, very good, thank you. As of yesterday, I believe, we are now in good standings with the Department of Retirement Services, which has been a less than favorable relationship, and I believe today we are now in good shape with the Department of Revenue also. Is that a true statement, Donna? So, thank you much, Donna, for your forensic work in sorting through and getting these reports.
Awesome.
Up to date, it's just been, there's a lot of help going on here, and things are getting put in their proper place. The last thing I have is not a good piece of information, but we have a new situation that I think is going to rise to the top of our list of problems here to be solved, opportunities for success, excuse me. And that would be getting a new water line in our wetlands. And for those of you who don't know what that means, that would be the section of water line that is between fourth and fifth on Willis. Today, our public works, with the help of Mr. McGowan, patched another leak, and if you want to see pictures, in a ten-foot section, there are only one inch or two inch that do not have one of these ban patches. And today, they had to fabricate one of our longer patches, cut it down a little bit on each side to fit between two of the other ones. I fully expect that to be the next situation, as we had up on the hill there in the railroad tracks. It's going, it's going to happen. And it's probably going to happen in the summertime when we're flowing the most water. I'm not sure where the funding is going to come from, this is not something that we can do with our own public works group. This is going to have to be engineered, it's going to need new, a new line, all new saddles to go to, I believe there's five houses there. It's going to need water meters that are set in the right place, which requires some, when you start getting into placing water meters on a whole area like that, that becomes contractors who have to be insured to serve, do certain jobs. I don't have a good idea for a cost, I just don't. I only know that this is not something we're going to handle with part-time employees, this is going to be a contractor-type thing.
Have we had a conversation with Steve?
Steve Marsh, I have not. This just came up today, and I can just see this is going to be the top of our list here before long.
It might be good to just have a conversation with him, because he might know of grants, or of, or he could give you a ballpark to even know how much money we're hunting for.
Cynthia Wall and, and Margie Hall.
Yeah.
I'm going to reach out to him. I think this would fit under Steve, at least initially, Steve Marsh's TDNH's initial water system plan. And we could just focus on, hey, we want you to look at this right now.
I have holes open, you know, and talking to, yeah, I actually seriously do have holes open that haven't been filled. Reason being that when we repair an area like this, the hole is left open, it's combed off, but it needs to be left open for at least a day, maybe two days, to make sure that the leak has actually been conquered. Because you don't want to just say, yep, we got it, cover it up, and the next day, here it comes again.
Mr. Mayor, is any, could this be thrown under any court, with what you mentioned earlier? Situation with last year, what they're currently doing?
I, I don't believe so, it's my understanding that if there's money left over, and there could be, that that money has to go back to Public Works, because that was an emergency loan that we got, a grant, excuse me.
I didn't want to mention emergency, but I-
It was an emergency, that's why that money, we took the perfect storm there for that, and we got that money.
Well, you kind of-
And this isn't an emergency.
Yes, so I just was wondering if that could be-
And I think that's maybe why it might be good to have a conversation with Steve, because I think he'll be able to give you a little bit of the landscape to know where to go for. He might not have the final opinion, but he might say, yeah, maybe you could actually, if you classified it this way, or something like that, and then just give us a direction to start chasing.
So, he's pretty much a daily, here lately, a daily person I speak to. Anyway, that lovely piece of information is the last that I got from the mayor this week. The next thing on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody in the public that has a comment at this time? No? Okay. Well, that completes our agenda, other than an executive session, which, I'm going to say we're going to need twenty-five, thirty minutes, so, and in the vat, we're going to, we won't give a report back to the group saying here.
And this is to discuss employee performance issues?
Yes.
Okay.
So unless, unless- Thank you all for coming very much. We don't usually get a lot of participation, we would love to have more.
And don't check it out. Make sure to stop by the gift shop on your way out.
Next time we'll bring cookies.
Take your weight.
Have a great night, thank you.
How long do you want, Justin?
I, I'm guessing thirty, however long it takes us.
Let's go to twenty-five, and then we can extend.
Okay.
Because we can't, we can't pull it back.
Okay.
We're going to have the mics off.
Starting at nine PM, and we'll be back at nine twenty-five PM.
Okay.
It could come up. Well, I don't know if it's going to come up before then or not.
Yeah.
When it comes up, it's going to hit its ugly head and we're going to deal with it. I do not have the original copy re-signed.
We're live, I guess, too.
Yeah, we're live, so it's, yeah.
So again, a test of some of these things. Well, I do have a copy of it, and all of you were given a copy that night.
Yeah.
There was one in the boxes, which I think probably got thrown out. But I'm not near as worried about words being changed as to what the words we signed were.
All right, Levi, I guess you're up. Unless you have anything else, Jess?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Ah, you got away. Second?
Levi is the second.
You seconded it. Okay. All in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting's adjourned at 9:32 PM.
I think that's so sticky.
Tell Ashley to feel better.
Tell us when you're off.